I'd like to call this meeting, show the city council to order, show that all council members are present. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Got a few exciting things on the agenda. I've asked Councilman Adams to do the invocation led by Councilwoman Kokavas. And the pledge, if you'd like to join us, please do.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful this day to be together as a council and as a public to discuss our beautiful community. We are very grateful for the moisture we've received, Father, and now it can help us and avoid the dangers of the fire season. We are grateful for all of our blessings, and we pray that thou be with the leaders of our country in this trying time, and that they'll be able to have peace, and we'll be able to continue to strive and do better. We ask for thy spirit to be here as we discuss and talk about our community this night, and we pray that thou be with us at all times. We say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate that. Before we move on, we want to, we've got a little tribute we want to do for passing of Councilman Kelly. You know, he's spent over 26 years with the city council, and I don't know how many years with planning and zoning. So we got a little video we'd like to share. If Mel's ready, we'll roll that right now. Councilmember, January 24th, 1995 to June 4th, 2002, and June 1st, 2004 to December 2020, mayor, June 4th, 2002 to June 1st, 2004.
For my last comments as a council member, to be truly meaningful, I went to the Bible. In his last days on earth, Jesus taught his apostles, the measure of greatness is in service to others. I want to thank all of you who, over the years, have voted for me and allowed me to serve in this capacity.
...supporting the veterans that they committed, and especially the goals of the veterans of foreign wars.
Thank you, Jean. We appreciate everything that he's done for our city, that's for sure. He's truly going to be missed. Definitely one of a kind. Next item on the agenda is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to talk about something off the end on the agenda may move up, seeing nobody move. We'll close call to public and move on to special events. Promotion of Detective Troy Eberline. Chief Shelley, did I say that last name right?
Yes, Shelley's fine.
I was thinking more of the Joe part.
Mayor City Council, yes, you did it right. Eberline is his last name.
Thank you.
If I can have Troy and Commander McNeil and Commander Provost come on up here. While they're coming up, I'll give you a little bit of a bio on Troy. Troy was born in Sterling, Alaska, about two hours south of Anchorage. He began developing a strong work ethic in Alaska at the age of 11. He worked cleaning a bakery every morning from 4:00 a.m. till it was time to leave for school at 7:30. Troy later worked as a commercial fisherman. I never saw him on TV, but I was looking for it. As a young adult, Troy served his two-year mission for his church in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania area, and after returning to Alaska from Pennsylvania, he worked for the Alaska Department of Corrections in different capacities for approximately five years. In September of 2014, Troy began his next adventure in his family's life by starting his law enforcement career here with the Sholo Police Department. Troy's work ethic was immediately noticed by staff members and his peers. He showed a passion for detecting impaired drivers early on, and has since become an HGN, a horizontal gaze and a stagmister instructor, and he still continues to do that to this day, working the DUI task force. He recently was selected as a firearms instructor. He served as an RTO at the academy, Salina Leader Academy, SRO at the junior high, and a detective investigations unit, currently where he's at for the last year and a half. Troy's been married to his wife Katie for 13 years. They have four children, Peyton, 12, Ally, 10, Emma, 7, and Brooke, 4. All right? Okay. There you go. I won't ask your birthdays. I won't ask you your anniversary date. So we're good.
And one on the way, I believe.
Well, actually, that's true. There's one on the way. So that's number five. Troy is a very driven, dedicated employee. His goal was to become a patrol supervisor, and he's worked tirelessly to prepare for the testing process in November. That work paid off, and we're excited to promote Officer Troy Eberline to the rank of patrol sergeant. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know that Troy worked really hard preparing for this test. It's not, that was pretty quick. You know, it's not an easy test. We bring in evaluators from all over the state, actually. So they're completely outside. They're just, you're ranked and graded on whatever you do inside that assessment center. So it's a very, very hard, but very worthwhile. But he's been studying for this probably for the past seven months, as well as going to school and finishing out trying to get his degree. So along with that, working. So when I told him he was promoted, I actually went to his wife Katie and told her he was promoted. So it's a family affair. It really is. So that being said. We'll get out of the way, and Troy can give you his 10-minute speech. The only thing, the reason why you came up here is because I told you didn't have to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say congratulations to Sergeant Eberline, and we appreciate your contribution to our census. Also, Katie, Katie, I appreciate your dedication and your support to your husband. He can serve in such a capacity. It's an important, important role in our community, and it's a difficult capacity to serve in at this time in our nation, and we really appreciate you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any comment? Thank you. Good luck. Appreciate your service. All right, moving right along. Presentation of the State of the City Address. We're going to do something a little different. Mayor Seymour did this a few years ago, where each of the council members are going to read part of the State of the City Address, and I thought it was pretty neat. So we're going to do that again. So bear with us here. And yes, I am putting these on. I will be 60 soon, but manager's a little older than me. The start of the new year is a perfect time to reflect on what we've accomplished last year and to share our plans for 2021. Your city council has identified four major priorities that drive our policies and decisions. One of them is to preserve and repair our infrastructure, especially woods, water, and sewer, to pursue community economic development, to improve our quality of life, include better safety, education, and opportunities, to maintain an organization with solid and stable leadership. Our major accomplishments over the past few years, past year, our financial health and outlook, and our future plans consistently support these four priorities. Our city's economic outlook continues to steady upward trend. As evidenced, monthly sales tax revenues in 2020 showed increases over 2019. With retail comprising over 80% of the collections, we saw increases in construction activity in the residential sector, with 2020 being our most active year for residential construction since 2007. Our longstanding policy of fiscal conservatism and saving money for the future allows us every year to complete important projects. 2020 has no exceptions, and we complete several key projects to maintain and improve existing infrastructure. Councilman Alsop.
In rural projects, with our community block grant fund, we revitalized a downtown construction road in Perishry and provided along East Hall between 11th Street and South White Mountain Road, including new curbs, gutters, sidewalks, paved parking. A walk path is completed on 16th Avenue from McNeil to Old Lennon Road, including new concrete curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and direct direct with fencing. In wastewater projects, we completed sewer improvements on West Cooley from Central to 8th Avenue and replaced sewer lines on 24th Drive. In water projects, we have graded water lines citywide, including Cub Lake Road to CSD Lane. Water line improvements will be completed on West Cooley from Central to 8th Avenue. We began work on the Dusa Clubs White Mountain Road water line, crossing improvements, which will take place at four separate locations. A newly designed entry sign was installed on US 60 and State Route 260 intersection to welcome visitors to Sholo. With the safety in mind, 2018, the police department has expanded dispatch capabilities with intergovernmental dispatch agreements with towns of Pine Top Lakeside, Snowflake, Taylor, and five other fire districts. Insolidating dispatch has greatly improved response time and citizen safety across southern Navajo County.
Councilman Clark.
In pursuit of economic development, business growth, we welcomed Culver's Restaurant that opened along Evergreen and South White Mountain Road in early 2020, and construction was completed on a new store and standalone car wash at the new Circle K on White Mountain Road. Boutique Air, the city's commuter airline, since August 2015, continues daily flights between Sholo and Phoenix with steady use by passengers. Even with the pandemic, Boutique was able to average about 79% of passenger numbers in 2020 compared to 2019, which was better than the industry average, which reported about a 40% of passenger numbers compared to 2019. We're proud of our heritage and of bringing hope and the prospect of a better life through our community projects and holiday assistance. In observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, the city has sponsored an annual day of service since 2009, but because of COVID-19, we didn't do a project in 2020. However, depending on conditions, we have tentatively scheduled a day of service this year on April 24th, and we also supported the Eighth Annual Community Fast of Compassion, helping our community raise a record $47,000 for individuals and families in need during the holidays. We thank everyone who donated their time, their monies, and their efforts. We held our election in August with three council seats, and the mayor's seat were on the ballot. All seats were for four-year terms. Our vice mayor, Fani Kokavas, was reelected to her seat, and we welcome newcomers John Adams and Don Wilson. Also, we elected a new mayor. His name is John Leach Jr., but most of our friends just affectionately call him Junior, and he'll be our mayor for at least the next four years.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson.
In terms of our financial position, the council and staff are committed to using your taxpayer dollars wisely. Our conservative fiscal policy ensures that we have the necessary funds to meet your needs and withstand economic downturns. We never spend more than we have budgeted. We also save money to pay for at least a portion of larger, more expensive projects in future years. Our department managers share that vision by carefully analyzing every program to ensure efficiency. We're proud to say our fiscal policies have allowed Sholo to survive difficult economic times and see modest growth. We believe in retaining local control over the city's budget, which must be balanced according to state law. To protect you and our city's assets, we have two permanent mandates: to maintain at least a minimum of $1 million in reserves and to require a supermajority vote of the sitting council to approve any tax increase. Our cost-conscious approach supports our pledge to deliver full police and public work services, community events, and recreational activities to meet your needs and interests. We offered our 22nd annual free project clean-sweep beautification program, provided the Christmas tree recycling site, and co-sponsored the 12th Annual Electronic Waste and Used Tires Collection Event with Navajo County.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kokavas.
Thank you. To improve our quality of life, another council priority, our employees are dedicated to providing a variety of events, including sports leagues, kids and family-friendly events, library and aquatic activities, holiday happenings, and music in our parks. Although we had to cancel our Fourth of July celebration parade and Freedom Fest in 2020, we are hopeful that we can again celebrate our freedom in 2021 with spectators and participants from across the region. Our signature Sholo shines for the holidays illuminated our city with sparkling Christmas lights and holiday spirit. The beautiful lights in our downtown area drew praise from residents and visitors alike, and our Christmas light parade was enjoyed by spectators in person and online, hosted by the Sholo TV. To improve amenities and attractions at Archibec and Rayland Parks, we installed new playground structures and concrete curving. A new remodel was built at Rayland while an expanded playground service was added at Archibec Park. We completed improvements at the old pavilion at City Park, including restoring the fireplace, installing underground power, and adding a new asphalt in the parking area. The pavilion and restroom facility at the Sholo Trailhead were completed, and grant funds were used to construct a 2,000-linial feet American with Disabilities Act walking path along Sholo Creek, which we all get to view. Two fishing piers also grant-funded were built alongside the path. We're also researching the feasibility of developing a convention, events, and sports facility in Sholo, a long-term vision to make our city a destination.
Thank you. Councilman Adams.
To look ahead to 2021, our plans include completing a fence in the meadow along 260 near the new pavilion and along White Mountain Road, completing decorated lighting and trees along East Hall between North 11th Street and South White Mountain Road, making sewer capacity improvements on East Savage and replacing wastewater manholes, replacing water lines in Farm Brooks Subdivision and installing a new 1 million gallon storage tank, replacing water lines at 11th Avenue between West Owens and West McNeil, making roadway improvements, including adding a sidewalk along Sholo Lake, Sholo Lake Road from Scott's Ranch Road to Sholo Lake Campground, constructing West Owens between Pine Haven Subdivision and the exit portion of West Owens between, behind Horn Auto, repaving 14th Loop Subdivision, Hillcrest Subdivision, 6th Street, and 16th Avenue, improving city campus parking lots by adding lighting, sidewalks, and new pavements. Also this year, ADOT will mill and repave the Dusa Clubs and 260 from Dusa Clubs to Wagon Wheel with new right lane, right turn lane, and better alignment at the South White Mountain Road, White Mountain Road, Sholo Lake Road, and Cub Lake intersection. Installing more newly designed entry signs welcoming visitors to Sholo. We will continue to cooperate with other communities to provide added value services to our region, such as much-needed transit system and supporting tourism and marketing efforts.
Thank you. Councilman Hatch.
We attribute much of our success to the able assistance of our employees and volunteers who deliver their best to serve you. Our advisory committees, senior patrol, library friends, all provide their services for free, saving taxpayer dollars. Come volunteer your time, talents, or materials to better our community. We invite you to join us on April 24th for our Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service project, or participate in our civic process when the council and staff meet to discuss next fiscal year's budget. Every budget meeting held here in council chambers is open to the public. We begin the process in January with a town hall-style meeting specifically for citizens' input this Thursday, January 21st at 6:00 p.m. We'll hold another town hall for public input on Thursday, April 15th. The entire budget calendar is posted on our website. Your city council thanks you for your confidence in our ability to handle affairs. A sentiment shared by your fellow Americans, polls show that for more than a decade, Americans continue to trust local governments more than state government or federal government. Because the council and your staff are dedicated to remain accessible to you, we welcome your feedback. We are responsive. We are transparent, and we work together as a group of nonpartisan. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to thank the residents who took time to participate in the 2020 census. Well, it only took a few minutes to complete the questionnaire. The city will benefit for years to come. Every resident who was counted equals more shared revenue for our cities. Our city, revenues which are used to build and maintain roads, provide water and sewer service, recreational facilities and parks, and fund the police, senior centers, schools, and daycare centers. The political and social landscape has gone through many changes over the past year. Let that not deter us from supporting each other, focusing on positive and enriching the world as we embark on the new year. Let us leave behind a legacy of a better city for tomorrow and for future generations. 2020 was a difficult year in some regards, including losing two outstanding council members, Jean Kelly and Rennie Crittman. They both gave us many years of dedicated service to our community, and their influence on the council will be remembered for many years to come. We appreciate all you do to make our community a wonderful place to live. We thank all of you, our citizens, and we wish you and your family the best of health, peace, and happiness in 2021, and may God continue to bless us all in our community. Thank you all. Kind of gave me goosebumps right there. That was nice. Thank you all for doing that. I hope you guys enjoyed that. I thought it was kind of nice that we did that a few years ago, and glad we bring it back. Anyway, thank you guys very much. All right, moving right along. Consent calendar. Is there any items on the consent calendar that somebody would like to have removed or talked about? If not, consideration of the second amendment of portable hanger use, consideration of non-commercial ground lease with JNC Companies, consideration of award of purchase of city Sholo vehicles, consideration of the minutes of the city council regular meeting, January 5th, and I believe that was it.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I have a motion. I need a second. I have a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. All right, moving right along. Next item on the agenda, as soon as I find it, is consideration of approval of listed job-order qualified contractors for water wells. Mr. Austin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I gotta put mine on now.
You need mine?
No, I got it. Good sir, right here. The city of Sholo's water production system includes 14 wells. The depth of these wells range from approximately 550 feet to 800 feet. The casing sizes of the wells range from 4 to 16 inches, and production ranges from 120 gallons a minute to 700 gallons per minute. The system includes submersible and inline vertical turbine pumps. The average water use in the system is about 900,000 gallons a day. We actually exceeded that this year, a little bit over a million a day. The wells require regular maintenance and replacement. The abrasive effect of the native Koconino sands in the aquifer wear pumps at a fast rate. Most pumps in the system are replaced every three to five years. The city's water system is operated as enterprise fund, with a total maintenance budget of approximately $290,000 per year. The city of Sholo conducted a competitive process to retain up to three contractors for a job order contract, or JOC, to provide labor, furnish, and install materials relating to repairing and maintaining water wells, and repair existing water facilities at various locations. JOCs will streamline procuring well repair and replacement services in days instead of weeks. Time is especially critical during high water usage during the spring months. Each individual project will be bid competitively among the three chosen. Individual job orders should not exceed $125,000, and a majority of the well projects should not exceed $50,000. The estimate annual budget for well maintenance is about $200,000 per year. The term of these contracts will be three years with two one-year renewal options. Services will be requested on an as-needed, if needed, basis, and the resultant contract is not a commitment by the city that the contractor services will be required. In December of 2020, the city staff solicited statements of qualifications for well service firms to provide job order contracting services. The solicitation process followed Arizona's revised statute, Title 34, wherein prospective companies submitted statements of qualification, or SOQs, which were reviewed and ranked by a selection committee of city staff. A total of six statements of qualifications were received and graded, resulting in the following list of three qualified firms: Willis Drilling and Pump, Beaman Drilling, and Weber Water Resources. I move to approve the list of qualified contractors for water wells and to enter into a job order contract with the listed firms.
We'll read that part.
Oh, sorry.
We don't mind. We can change chairs, and I'll read that.
That'll work.
We'll do that part.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. No problem. Does anybody have any questions, or Mr. Austin? Have we ever done this before?
Yes, we just came off a five-year term.
It was a five-year. I thought I remember seeing it before. And is it basically roughly about the same amount of money, or is it a little more?
It's a little less, actually.
It's a little less.
Mm-hmm. We've actually changed the spec for our pumps and column pipe, and we've been able to reduce the cost of maintaining our wells.
Very good. Well, I'd look for a motion, but there's already been one made. Any other questions or a motion? Vice Mayor.
I move to approve Rick's motion. Approve the list of qualified contractors for water wells and to enter into a job order contract with the listed firms of Willis Drilling and Pump, Beaman Drilling, and Weber Water Resources.
Yes, ma'am.
I got a motion any second. Councilman Wilson, I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those approved. Thank you, sir.
Take care.
All right, moving on. I believe we are going to summary of current events. Any council members have anything they would like to... Councilman Alsop.
Thank you. Just like to let everybody know, I went to Meals and Wheels board meeting. Well, we didn't go to it. We had a Zoom meeting. So it's just getting a little bit comfortable to have Zoom meetings now where you don't see people or be around people. So anyway, Meals and Wheels are doing good. They're doing some bylaws, and we're doing some cleanup and everything else. But I wanted to say one thing to you about Meals and Wheels, and something you can do right now is, this is the time of year where everybody's looking at something to defer taxes to and to maybe give some money to. So Meals and Wheels is a 501(c)(3) and could use any, anybody that'd like to donate to the IRS and get your money back on that. Be more than happy to do it. The good thing about doing... The good thing about doing things here at Meals and Wheels is all your money stays here. None of your money goes off this mountain, doesn't go to any frontline people, it's all goes straight to the people that need the money, and that's the elderly people here in Sholo. So, if you feel like you'd like to donate, please give it to Meals and Wheels Senior Center and they have the paperwork that you can fill out. Had an opportunity last Wednesday to ride with Sergeant Clark and do a patrol with him. Unbelievable what our officers go through and what our officers do. I'm proud to say that we have some great officers and I will stand behind, behind them 100%. I also told the chief that I would like to ride with every one of them this year if I can. So, if you have an opportunity and a chance to ride with one of our police officers and to see what they go through night after night working, I would start with Chief Shelley and see if you can have an opportunity to do that. And I want to thank staff for putting the little tribute tonight for Gene Kelly on. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson, did you have?
Yes. Some people may know that in April 22nd of 2019, a statewide hands-free law went into effect. Most people knew it went into effect, but also knew that law enforcement wasn't writing tickets. They could write warnings but not tickets. But what you should know is as of January 1st of 2021, now you can get a ticket. So, the following is illegal when driving, holding a phone to make or answer a call, reading or sending messages, holding or supporting a device with your body. There are some exceptions such as emergency 911 calls, GPS navigation, or using a hands-free device. So, hands off the phone, keep them on the wheel, and the life you save may be your own.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Today I had the opportunity to attend a telephonic meeting with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns regarding our legislative session that they just went back into session, I believe it was last week. Governor Ducey did his State of the State address. He issued his, his executive budget of what he's requesting. Couple of items that are of interest for us as a community is law enforcement seems to be a very hot button issue. I agree and echo what Councilman Austin said. I fully support our law enforcement community as well as I'd stand behind our law enforcement officers. And I feel like we have some of the best in the state. We really are fortunate to have individuals like Sergeant Everline and see him go through those. But one of the bills that I saw was, they could have significant financial impacts for us as a community, you know, the body worn camera redaction, some of those kind of things. So, I would invite members of the public and members of the council to kind of keep those on your radar because what they do in Maricopa County has a direct impact on our fiscal, on our budget here in Sholo.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Vice Mayor.
Our area continues to experience a surge in COVID positive cases, so please make sure you're wearing your mask and paying attention to social distancing. Also, we've started doing Moderna vaccinations in the county. That's handled through the county health department and Summit Healthcare has been one of their partners in administering those vaccinations. To receive a vaccination, you can go to podvaccine.azdhs.gov or you can go onto the summithealthcare.net website and register for a vaccine at that location too. I heard that Arizona opened up 1B to 65 and older. We have been administering 1A and 1B, so please make sure that you're registered, that because of the lack of ability to get vaccines in a huge allotment, it's necessary to be registered and have your vaccine set aside for you. We, we are not able to take walk-ins.
Thank you. I have, I have a question. Do, how are they doing the allotment? Do we know how? How does Navajo County get it compared to, I, I'm sure it's population, do you know how they're doing that?
I, I don't. That's handled through. We just received 800 for 1A second dose and 200 for the 1B first dose.
Thank you.
Can I ask, may I ask you a question, Mayor?
Yeah.
Of the vaccine, you say the 1A and the 1B, and I know that if somebody gets one dose, they have to come back for a second dose, but is there a time limit that they have to do that within?
They need to do that on the 28th day. 28 days.
28 days.
Either one of you have anything you want to report?
You know, it's a very time-consuming process of getting online and getting yourself registered, and you come to a certain point where you cannot go any further. You've done what you need to do at the front end of that application process. Don't be frustrated by the fact that all of a sudden you're no longer on the list. Be, be very steadfast in going back online and going back online until you get through the whole process. And it isn't a simple issue, but it's mandatory that you do that if you want to be on that list to receive those inoculations. What I would just say, if you're not, if you're not computer literate, don't worry about that. There are a number of people in the community, you can find someone that can answer your questions that will help you, and they've probably already been through the process too, that they can help you through getting your application in.
In that regard, the Sholo Library, the Pinetop Lakeside Library, the Re Center in Pinetop is also assisting with registration. You can also call the line at summithealthcare.net and they will help you register as well.
Thank you. Anybody need seconds? I know it's a few, few months away, but I'm pretty excited to announce we're starting to move forward on our barbecue contest, maybe coming back in May, so I'm really excited about that. We're, we're, I met with the promoter today, we're having a steak contest on Friday at Kids' Q. There's all kinds of things going on. We're really excited about it. We, we're praying that it continues and moves forward, but we need to start planning for stuff like that, so maybe we can start moving forward. But I'm really excited about it. It's gonna, I, well, you guys probably know I love to barbecue, so it's pretty exciting when there's a contest. Another thing I'd like to do is, if I can have Tamara come up. So, tonight, where is Tamara's last meeting? We're sorry to see her go, but she is retiring. I think she's been with the city for over 18 years now, and it is sad to see Tamara go. I think she's been, I know I've been here, sitting here for 12 years and got to see Tamara through all of them, but we'd just like to give you a little appreciation of, of your service to our city. And you make this job, I, I can speak for myself, you make this job so easy, easier, I should say, because you, you, you make it just, just easy. I, I don't know how else to say it, when you come from, from a non-political area and you come into this venue and, and you give us all the paperwork we need and everything we need, answer all our questions. It's, it's exciting for you. I know I hate to see you leave, but I think you're leaving us in good hands. So, anyway, we'd like to give you a little appreciation of our, of everything you've done for us. You can talk if you want, Tamara.
Well, I really am not prepared to say anything, but I will say how, how blessed I feel to have worked for the city for 18 years and the staff that the city has is just amazing. The things that they know and you can always find an answer if you have questions and, and then to work with the council members, I feel like we have the best counsel of anybody in this whole state. I've met with a lot of clerks and some of them don't speak very highly of their, of their counsel, so I appreciate getting to work with you guys that are here currently and the ones before you as well. And I feel like we are leaving the city clerk's office in good hands and very capable people that'll be taking over in the clerk's office. And excited for them and I'm excited to reach retirement age, so thank you all.
Thank you, Tamara. Appreciate you very much. Before we go to the mayor's report, does anybody have anything else?
I do.
Vice Mayor.
I've had the opportunity of working with Tamara either as a coworker with Tamara since she started or on city council, and I must say that she has served with dignity and composure. She brings quiet calm to our meetings and to us as a council, she reassures us. She's extremely efficient. She's provided excellent representation throughout the state for our community and our city. She's dedicated and she has trained excellent staff to replace and carry on the duties of the office of the city clerk. And I for one have been in denial about this day coming, and Tamara, I want you to know that I appreciate you, I admire you, and we are going to miss you very, very, very much.
Little of that.
Anybody else? Thank you again, Tamara. I know everybody probably would love to say something, but we do hate to see you go, but you're gonna have fun.
Did you want to say?
You have to babysit somebody now too.
Yeah, congratulations, Jim.
All right. Nobody else? We'll move on to the city manager's report.
John, let me jump in.
Oh.
You know, I'm sitting here grinning and thinking how wonderful it is for you to be coming into this stage of your life, but I guess I'm about third down the list on seniority on the, on the council now, fourth down, but I really appreciated your help. You've been an anchor of stability and calming. We do appreciate that very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hatch. Appreciate that. City manager.
I too would like to thank Tamara for her years of dedicated service. The council thinks she takes care of you, she really takes care of staff, so we're thankful for all she's done for us. Just a couple of things to report. We've begun the process, as you've heard earlier, in the meeting of the city's fiscal budget for 2022, and there, as was mentioned earlier, there'll be a town hall budget meeting specifically for citizens this Thursday, January 21st at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And all the, all the budget meetings are open to the public, and if you're interested in looking at the budget calendar, it's on our website at sholoz.gov. Just, we've received, we received notification that the city was awarded the distinguished budget presentation award for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021 by the Governor Finance, Government Finance Officers Association. We want to congratulation or congratulate our finance staff, particularly Justin and Carrie for their commitment of meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. We want to thank them for what they do to help us keep our budgets straight and, and have a balanced budget in the city. And in public works projects, we continue, our contract continues working on the waterline crossings. So, you remember there were a couple on White Mount, or White Mountain Road 260, those are completed. They're completing the one in front of Autozone, and they have one more to go by the Victorian building. That's in anticipation of the resurfacing that ADOT will do later this year. Thank you, that's what I have.
Thank you. Pretty excited about that repaving project. Ooh, that's gonna be nice. Scheduling of meetings. Do we have any meetings we need to schedule that anybody knows about? No scheduling meetings? Thank you all again for helping out with that State of the City address. I appreciate it very much and kind of, kind of one of my other goals is get us all more involved, and that's kind of the start of it. I, I think when, when, or Mayor Seymour did that, I, I was pretty excited about it. So, anyway, thank you guys all again for that, and I appreciate it. If we have nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.